How is everyone today? Great. At this time, I call to order the July 15, 2021 work session of the MARTA Board of Directors. May I have everyone sign in, please? Has everyone had an opportunity to sign in? Great, thank you. I would be remiss not to make a statement regarding this meeting because it's been more than a year since we've had the opportunity to meet in person. This is the first in-person meeting of the MARTA Board of Directors in well over a year. In the past year, we, MARTA, has faced immense and unprecedented challenges. The pandemic challenged us in ways we never imagined. I am proud to say that this extremely difficult time, we were able to continue to provide essential service to the region. I want to also point out, we had great successes, such as those we achieved during the 2021 Georgia Legislative Session with the passage of House Bill 511. House Bill 511 creates a state funding mechanism for ongoing investment for capital transit projects in the state. With the passage of this historic bill, we emerged stronger through the pandemic health crisis. The CARES Act also bought us revenue that allowed us to continue to support our patrons. Also, I want to take this time to acknowledge and thank our MARTA CEO, Jeff Parker, as well as all of our great MARTA staff. Also, I want to recognize those who, if it were not for their dedication, we would not have been able to continue providing necessary and essential service. Those deemed by the FTA and the federal government as essential workers, such as our MARTA police, our bus and rail operators, our mechanics, our technicians, our service personnel, and our station agents. Thank you to the MARTA technical and IT staff who made sure every scheduled virtual meeting took place no matter what. Thank you to our patrons and our customers, and to my fellow board members. Thank you and the jurisdictions you represent for your unparalleled performance as board members throughout this year. Thank you, thank you, thank you. At this time, I yield to our CEO, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and want to also reiterate briefly your comments about how important our, our staff has been during this ongoing pandemic and my gratitude to all, to all their hard work and their dedication to, to our customers and their fellow employees.
Mr. Parker, I am so sorry, but I'm going to have to interrupt you.
You can interrupt me anytime you want.
A little nervous for this first in-person meeting, but may I have approval of the June 10, 2021 work session minutes? May I have a motion?
Need for approval?
Are there any opposes? I'm used to being virtual, so may I get a vote, please? Is there any discussion? None at this time, please vote. Mine, mine won't confirm either. The minutes are approved. Now, I re-yield to Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Just have a few, few comments to make. We do have one relatively short presentation, and I'll talk about the, the upcoming meetings. We do have a fairly short general manager report. You know, I, you know, I don't want to underscore the comments that you made and the appreciation that, that we all have to our frontline employees who have worked so hard through this, this, this pandemic, and we're grateful to all that. But, you know, this is, is our first meeting back. We have some, some not new seasoned board members who are new to this room, so welcome, welcome to the room. We've got a few board members who have switched seats, so I'm going to be looking the wrong spot for still a while, so, and, and we do have a somewhat, you know, upgraded room. We have some new technology, so if, if folks could just bear with us as we're trying to get through the, the first time we've used this new technology, if you appreciate that, appreciate your indulgence there. And then we also have some new equipment, obviously some safety precautions that we've put up. We've had new screens, and I think it's important to note that, you know, we've now have much lower screens so that we can see each other's faces, which I think is really important to be able to, to see each other and see the, the members of the public who are coming here to speak to us from time to time. And then, if you look on the wall over here, we've replaced all the photographs. I think we've got some, some great photographs which are clearly connected in a very intentional way to our jurisdictions, representing, you know, our important relationship that, that the agency and the board has to our jurisdiction, so when you get a moment, please look at our new pictures. And I just want to thank Melissa Mullenex and her staff for really taking advantage of the opportunity of not using this room during the pandemic to really make sure it's in, in perfect condition for us at our first meeting, and, and here we are. So, thanks, thanks, Melissa. We do have one brief presentation, and Raj and Kevin, I'm not sure who's actually going to present it, but if the two of you could, could come up.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and Mr. Parker. At the board work session in March of 2021, a few months ago, I had briefly discussed our plans to optimize MARTA's debt structure. When I say optimize, I mean being able to issue debt in a cost-effective manner, in an amount we want to, and at a time we need to effectively support our capital program. With that brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Hurley, our Deputy CFO, who will discuss our plans and timelines for optimizing our debt structure. Thank you. Kevin?
Good afternoon, Ms. Scott, members of the MARTA Board, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Raj, for the introduction. I'm here to brief you today on an item that we had previously talked about, but in somewhat of a different format. We've talked about establishing a short-term borrowing program, and at this point, rather than talk about it, we'd like to move forward and actually put a short-term borrowing program in place. So, our agenda for today, I'm going to briefly discuss our initial presentations on short-term borrowing, and it was specifically in the form of a credit facility. We're going to discuss the product expansion and a little bit different utilization, the permission to solicit, which will be a resolution that's on the agenda following this meeting, item five on the agenda, and then board actions. Okay, in the initial board briefings, we conducted a work session on August 13, 2020, and within that work session, we talked about some tools that we would like to have in light of the COVID pandemic. One of those was a negotiated bond underwriter pool, which we have recently established in a prior board meeting. And then subsequently, in order to tap the markets in the case that the bond market was in turmoil and challenged, and we couldn't get cash, we thought that having a, a credit facility would allow us to get cash in the short term to support our needs. So, it was presented as a liquidity facility. It was initially thought as a contingency plan, and we had, and then in March, after Raj came onboard, we, we took a look at this and thought, well, maybe we should expand on this a little bit. And so, briefly, when we were discussing the plan of finance at the March 20, March 11 work session, 2021, we incorporated a little bit different product that we were going to use rather than a liquidity facility. So, why did we decide to have an expansion of, and not just use a regular liquidity facility? Well, we felt that we wanted something a little more than a contingency plan, and what it would do is it would allow us to borrow on an interim basis. We'd, we'd be able to utilize very low rates currently. We could draw them only when we, we needed to, and then we also have the ability to issue subordinated debt, which means it's subordinated to the existing debt that MARTA has, and it's not counted in our bonds, additional bonds test. So, it, it helps us when we go issue our other long-term bonds. And then, it also still acts as that backstop in challenged markets. So, we still get the contingency, but we're expanding the use. In order to expand that use, we've decided that we need to do a request for proposal solicitation rather than a specific product where we would go out and, and just do a simple bid. So, what this RFP will do is it'll allow the market to respond to our request, and they will be able to present multiple products that could potentially meet our requirement. And those multiple products, MARTA will go through and evaluate, and we'll talk about it on this slide a little bit, or then the following slide. MARTA can go in and evaluate and select the right product to fit our needs. So, permission to solicit? In order to conduct an RFP, we have to have the board's permission to conduct the solicitation. Hence, following this meeting, and item five on the, the board agenda, is the resolution to approve the solicitation. The solicitation will be released, evaluated, all the legal documents prepared, and this will all be conducted by MARTA's financial advisors, our bond and disclosure counsel, and the Department of Finance staff. We're hoping to release the RFP next Monday, July 19. We want responses returned to us by August the 16th, and we plan on presenting to the Business Management Committee for consideration on September 30th, and full board approval of the product and pricing on October 14. If approved on October 14, we'd look to close in November, and our next, we anticipate that our next foray into the capital markets would be sometime in January. So, we would have this product in place well in, in, in time to use it if we choose to do so. One thing I do want to point out is the resolution that you're, I think, that you're considering for approval today is strictly to do the solicitation. The approval of the product won't be until October the 14th. Board of Directors' actions, as I alluded to, following this meeting, there will be an opportunity to approve the resolution for permission to solicit to establish a short-term borrowing program to facilitate efficient debt management in support of the capital improvement program through a request for proposals. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. And as, as you had said, we will have a, an action, be requesting an action of the board at the, at the actual board meeting that will follow this work session, so.
Jeff? I've got a question.
Please.
Kevin, the subordinated debt, which is second in line in the capital stack, what is the collateral against that? Because the, all the other bonding is not impacted to the rate, so what is the collateral for this debt?
MARTA would be trading on its existing, you know, its own credit worthiness, and so we're not having to post any particular collateral, but it's still going to be used to support capital projects that we would be drawing in arrears. So, those underlying assets are, are still supporting the, the capital structure.
Yes, sir.
Just to add to that, our bonds are issued with a lien on our sales tax revenues. So would this, but this will be subordinate to our senior lien.
Okay.
In other words, after all the senior liens are satisfied, then there'll be a call on the remaining sales tax revenues.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just an observation. So, my understanding that this type of lending was, was done once before at MARTA?
Yes, sir.
And, and so, it's just something that you're doing again, because I guess the market is, is kind of allowing the favorability to do it?
Yes, sir.
Is that the reason why we're doing it this time?
Yes, sir. Back, we, we had a product similar to this called commercial paper in place, and that may be something that is proposed by one of the proponents. Back in 2013, in order to support a, a commercial paper program, we had letters of credit in place. And back in 2013, there was legislation and rules and regulations put in place by, I don't want to get too technical, but the Basel regulations that were put in place due to the financial meltdowns in 20, 2007 through '09. It required certain liquidity on those letters of credit, and the liquidity went up dramatically to, you know, 100%, and it priced letters of credit out of the market. So, you saw a lot of organizations, including MARTA, move away from commercial paper, and instead, we started using floating rate notes at that point. So, yes, sir, we did have it. The market has come back to a degree. We're not sure whether or not commercial paper will be the product. We're certainly going to look for the most cost-effective that MARTA could use.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair? Question, please. Thank you. Excuse me. I wanted to ask about the, well, one of the things I understood earlier was that this will allow some of the capital projects to be expedited because you don't have to wait in the cycle of trying to have the funds become available. So, I think that's a good tool, but my question is, once this, we have the provider or the vendor, and this is in place, will the staff have to come back to the board when they want to draw down from those funds?
I, I do believe it would be product-dependent, but I'm, I'm, I believe we would have to come back to the board every time we went out to draw funds off of the, the facility.
And, and?
Certainly, a commercial paper program, if that were selected, we would come back and get the board's permission to execute that draw.
One other question, if I may. Raj was saying that the sales tax would be used as the lien. There would be a lien against the sales tax, and I want to understand, would that also be a lien for what Clayton County and more MARTA has set aside? Would that be included?
The, the, the pledged amounts that are going to all of MARTA's bonds, whether they be this, the, the stated good repair bonds that we issue, or the bonds that we would issue for Clayton County or City of Atlanta projects, the entire sales tax is pledged, as well as the title ad of alarm taxes are pledged. So, yes, ma'am, all the taxes would be utilized for any bond series. Likewise, if we're to issue bonds to support Clayton County, the entire sales tax is pledged currently, not just Clayton County.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you have to bear with me just a minute here, because I don't understand much of this. I'm, I'm not sure I understand what the proposal, the request for a proposal is for. I mean, are you looking for, it's not a particular product, but it's a, and who will respond to this proposal, proposal requires?
Thank, that, that's an excellent question. The, the proposal would be for what we term a commercial paper-like product. The product in the investment community, the underwriting community, has moved quite a bit since 2013, when we had an issue with commercial paper. Commercial papers are still issued, that's one, but there are some others, similar products such as floating rate notes, variable rate notes. There are quite a few products that have evolved since then. So, the request for a proposal would be for any or all of those, and we would evaluate what best meets our needs. Then, we would come back to the Business Management Committee in September and October with a specific product, pricing, and seek approval.
And, and who, who are the firms that'll respond to this proposal? I mean, are they banks, or they? Who, who would do that?
That, that is correct. It'll be a combination of investment and commercial banks.
Okay, and, and the idea here is to have access to money?
Correct.
To use in, when you need it. Is it, is it like a line of credit? I mean, I'm familiar with a personal line of credit that if I want to buy something, I have to go get some money to buy it, and I use this line of credit to get it. I've got to pay it back within a, within a particular period of time. Is that kind of the same philosophy?
Conceptually, yes. It would be the same. It'll have a term of three years, and a maximum, what we're proposing is a $300 million facility. So, we don't have to borrow all of that. It could be in the amount, as I mentioned earlier, in the amount we need, when we need it, and after a certain, let's say we reach a certain threshold of about $100 million or so, those would be converted to longer-term bonds, or long-term bonds. So, till then, to help with the construction, the planning, and the design phase, this is a very cost-effective and a very flexible product. That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, so the idea then, to get it into my little simple brain here, is that you're going to start using this funds times when you may not want to issue a bond?
That is correct.
Might not be, the market might not be good, and you're going to build this up, and when it gets 100 million, then you're going to, then you have to issue a permanent or a long-term bond?
I, I wouldn't quite characterize it as we have to issue. I, I just gave 100 million dollars as an example. That's a kind of a critical threshold, if you will. It could be more than 100, and yet, at some point, it has to be either extended, rolled over, or converted to longer-term bonds, and we'll come back, whatever the appropriate course of action at that point.
So, when you come back to ask us for approval, you're going to say it's a $300 million program, three years is the time link, so if we start borrowing on this, there is a deadline when it'll have to be converted or paid off?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and the reason, the primary reason, if I understand this right, is that you don't want to be forced into the bond market at any particular time?
There are a couple of significant reasons for that. One, just as you said, for, for example now, it's not very efficient to issue bonds, long-term bonds, because the cost efficiency is pretty high in a small amount. So, usually, you go to the markets with the, again, 100 is not a magic number, but that's kind of what we call a critical amount, if you will, or a substantive amount. So, the cost efficiency is high. If the utilization does not match what we issue, we suffer what's called a negative arbitrage. In other words, you know, for example, you're paying 3% interest on the bonds, but by internal revenue code, we are not allowed to invest that, or unused portion of that in anything higher than a 3%. That's called, what's called arbitraging. We are prohibited from doing that. So, we are paying 3%, and we'll be investing in a much lower interest rate investment vehicle. That's what we're trying to avoid. In this, this is a short-term one. Typically, the interest rates on these would be less than 100 basis points or less than 1% overall, which is very suitable for a, during a construction or a design phase type of debt issuance. And once we are well into, as I said, you know, either 100 or 150, we'll convert that to longer-term bonds. We'll come back to the board at that point to seek permission with the terms on what we want to do.
All right, would this program have, be a fixed interest rate, or would be a variable interest?
Typically, it would be a variable interest rate. What would be fixed is what is called the spread, assuming it's based on an index.
Spread, what kind of spread we talking about there?
If you recall, about two months ago, we came to the board to refund or refinance one of the variable interest rate bonds that had just expired, the commitment had just expired. We issued that with what is called SIFMA, which is a short-term tax exempt interest rate index. At that point, it was about seven basis points, or seven tenths of, I mean, seven one hundredth of 1% plus 39 basis points. So, the effective cost was .43%. That was about two months ago, so we are looking at something similar. We'll be, we'll, I'll be in a much better position to discuss that once we get the responses back.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm appreciating your indulgence. I'm not very, I'm pretty much a novice at this kind of stuff, and it's important. I've learned it's not important that I understand it, it's important that I think you understand it.
Right.
That's the important thing here, and I'm, you're about convinced with that.
I, I do. What a point to fill it with a share. I, I said two significant reasons why we wanted it. One is that I, I just talked about it. It's efficient, it's cost-effective. The second thing, Kevin touched on this, this is a subordinate lien. I think that, that, that's kind of an understatement. Reason I say that, for any municipal entity such as MARTA or a city or a county, bond ratings are precious. We have a double-A bond rating. The, the worst thing we can do is jeopardize that. The best thing we can do is enhance it, but reasonable expectation would be to at least maintain it. So, we want to maintain our existing bond ratings to the extent possible. I'm working towards that. Increase it from, we are at double-A plus by S&amp;P now, and slightly lower rated by Moody's, at double-A2, try and increase that, which would lower our cost of borrowing. By giving a subordinate lien, at the very minimum, we're going to preserve our senior bond rating. That is very critical. Actually, it may sound somewhat benign, that's really a big deal. So, those are the two objectives we are trying to accomplish with this.
Thanks, thanks, Raj. Thanks, Kevin, unless there's any other questions. I do want to go over several of the upcoming meetings. Before I do that, we do have some, some senior staff that's joined since we've been meeting in person. Raj Srinath, who was just obviously here presenting, joined us as Chief Financial Officer. I think many of you know him, he's been here for several months. But Ralph McKinney, maybe if you could just stand up and dip your, dip your mask down so we can actually see that, that face. Ralph is our Chief Safety and Quality Assurance Officer here at MARTA. He joined us from the Transit Agency in Honolulu-Hart, so welcome, welcome, Ralph. And Manjeet Renew, who's our Chief of Capital Programming, Expansion, and Innovation, has recently joined us from Utah Transit, so welcome to. So, welcome to the three new members who are new to Atlanta as well. So, I'm delighted to be able to work closely with all of them and as well as the other members of our senior leadership team. And no doubt, you've interacted with some of them already, but over time, you will certainly be getting to know them and appreciating them for their significant experience that they all bring to our transit agency. So, thank you. Manjeet, yeah. And finally, I just want to go over quickly. It's in the, it's on the agenda, but I will read them quickly. We do have upcoming board committee meetings on Thursday, July 22 for external relations and audit. We have our planning and capital programs, operations and safety. Business management will be Thursday, July 29, like this meeting. Both of those will be in person. We're really excited about some phenomenal work that I've seen some pictures of. But we will be holding a opening of a great art installation over by King Memorial Station, the underpass on Grant Street. This is actually, you know, not only an important adjacent underpass at our station where many people use it already to get into our station, but this is the path that the 300 units that are being constructed now on our property, the direct path into our King Station. So, this is an important, although, you know, not owned, this underpass isn't owned by us. We did get the ability to install some artwork there. So, that will be on Friday, July 23 and you'll get more information about that. Our Rider Advisory Council will be held August 4. We're continuing that virtually. And then the next MARTA Board of Directors and Work Session, the meeting as well as the Work Session, next month's meeting will be August 12 here in person again. So, with that, that concludes my report and I believe we, unless there's anything else, I believe we have an executive session.
Just a quick, I know we're in, obviously, we're in person at board meetings from now on. Are there some of our meetings that we are not planning on doing in person? Maybe don't have to be committee meetings or something like that? Or does all of it have to be done in person and is that the intent?
I'm going to, you know, defer to Liz and the justice, but we are, you know, my understanding is from the information that I've read from them is that any time that we have a vote of one of our either committee or the board or Work Session, that we would be required to do that in person. And maybe it's even more than, you know, whether there's a vote. But, you know, any comments on that from either of you?
We could actually discussed it last week in meetings.
Turn your...
Press the red button.
Turn your mic on.
Thank you, my first meeting, but yeah, we had, actually, Liz and I had discussed this last week and those committee meetings are going to have to be in person, so.
Can I just bring on public participation in those meetings? And is that allowed to be done by Zoom? I know a lot of the cities I deal with are dealing with this same issue now and I'm just not sure where MARTA fits into that.
Yeah, you know, I know we are accepting public comments at our board meeting like we have historically, but Liz, am I correct to say that through the mechanisms that we've opened up during the pandemic that we're still allowing some of that to be read into the record? Is that the case?
That's correct. We'll do it both with allowing person, people to come in person and through the emails and telephone line for board meetings. But we never accepted public comment at committee meetings. So, I think they'll be able to view them remotely, the committee meetings, but there is no public comment accepted at those.
But there will be public comment at these meetings.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
So, we will allow public participation, will there be restrictions on them?
Other than limiting the number of people in the room, I don't believe there are any, right, there are no restrictions. Liz is telling me there are no restrictions other than physically the number of people in the room and wearing masks.
And I believe there's an overflow room as well. So, if the number of people have exceeded the amount allowed, there is a place for overflow. Is that correct, Ms. O'Neill and Justice?
You know, and to that point, we have taken an opportunity to improve the technology in that overflow room. You know, we've had some issues with streaming and things like that. So, part of the upgrade of the technology in this room extended out to the overflow room so there'll be better quality audio and video in those rooms.
Mr. Abdul Salam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is on the schedule, Mr. CEO. We don't have the MAC committee again.
Yeah. The next one, the next one is in September, so we'll put that in on the August list of upcoming meetings. We only look ahead to the next month, so that's why that's not on there. There's no August meeting.
Okay, and finally, will we continue to stream our meetings live?
Yes.
Facebook or YouTube or where should people look?
I know YouTube is, we're using a YouTube channel. I'm not sure Face, is Facebook, it's YouTube, correct? We have a MARTA YouTube channel that we have a lot of media, including the live streaming.
YouTube, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to, are there any other questions?
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Ms. Abdul Salam.
The Riders Advisory Council is not meeting until August, but it's on here. So, I just think that we kind of overlook the MAC so often. We need to include it no matter what.
No, we've included all of the meetings between now and the next board meeting. And so, there is a Rider Advisory meeting in that time period. The next MAC meeting is after that. So, that's the reason. There's no, there is no, my understanding is there's no MAC meeting between today and the next board meeting. So, that's why we haven't listed it.
I don't understand. I mean, advance notice would be good. I don't think it would hurt anything.
Okay, we can always start to, regardless of the time period, have the next MAC meeting on the agenda. We'll make sure we do that.
Thank you.
Duly noted, Ms. Abdul Salam.
And, you know, can I just mention one thing? Because you're going to, it's, the glare on this, on the Plexiglas, I think the unintended consequence, it is a little difficult. So, I think if you're trying to get the chairwoman's attention, you may want to try a little harder because I know I have trouble seeing some of the glare. So, that works, so.
It's great to be in the room together again. With that being said, we will move into, may I have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Great. May I have a vote, please? Press the button really hard. Oh, we don't need a vote? We don't need vote in executive session? Excuse me. I'm sorry, Ms. O'Neill?
I'm sorry, you would need a vote. I just don't know if it's plugged into the machine. Is that what they were?
That's not what this is up there.
Yeah. Raise your hand. May I have a show of hands? All right, everyone's hand is raised, so we'll move into executive session at this time.
That we reorganize or tackle the agenda differently so that we address things that require or does everything require all of us to be here?
This should be quick.
Yeah, I read all the reports. It's just like resolution, 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 move approval, bum. Okay, and are there any chairs that are not here so that you've got people that are... Okay.
What do we do about public comment for the board meeting?
Okay. All right. Okay.
Oh, really?
To actually sign?
We can tell he's a throwback.
Yes.
Oh, right, right, right. We're switching back over to each other. Okay, but it's not now.
I know, but it was.
Because we're switching. Okay. Does she want us to put it back on executive session right now? Because right now it's showing that.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, yes. No, but when it turns on, does she want us to move back to our executive session? Okay. They've come out of executive session. I'll let you see where they're working.
I see that.
Yeah.
And so...
That's what they're requesting.
They're getting ready to go into ready for me. So that's...
Okay, so we want that. I'll let them know.
How are you? You seeing your face at all?
Oh, sure.
Unless you want me to grab yours. Okay, they have the station over there, but I don't have to. You have to pay her all of that.
Yeah. No, you don't.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, we're going to call to order the July 15, 2021 MARTA Board of Directors Meeting to Order. Are there any public comments?
Madam Chair, we received one public comment from Hector Hueso from Jobs to Move America, and this comment will be forwarded to all of you via email and also attached to the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you. So there are no in-person comments at this time?
No, Madam Chair.
Great. May I have a motion for approval of the June 10, 2021 MARTA Board of Directors Meeting Minutes?
I'll move approval. Jim Duratt.
You know what? It would be a great idea if we signed in.
Oh, okay.
And therefore, we would know who is here.
Right.
So with that being said, let us sign in, including myself. All signed in. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the June 10, 2021 meeting?
Move approval. Duratt.
Let us vote. All in favor? The minutes are approved. Thank you. At this time, we're going to call for the Planning and Capital Programs Committee Report.
Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, June 24, 2021, and approved the following resolutions. A. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for procurement of technical support services for automated fire collection system 2.0, RE AE 48067. B. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for architectural engineering design services for the five-point station, AE 47796. C. A resolution authorizing the execution of a boundary line agreement with Plowshaws, Inc., to clarify ownership of 1,860 square feet from 3326 East Ponce de Leon Avenue and 926, 926 square feet from 225 Laredo Drive adjacent to the Laredo Garage, Parcel D 1203 in the 18th District of DeKalb County, Georgia. And D. Resolution authorizing the approval of service modifications for August 14, 2021. Madam Chair, I request approval of these resolutions.
Second, Jim Duratt.
Thank you, Mr. Duratt. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Let us vote. The resolution has passed.
The committee also received the following briefings: a briefing August 2021 for service modifications, and F. a briefing August 21, 2021 for service modifications with public hearing results. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pan. Our next report will be from Operations and Safety Committee. Ms. Abdul Salam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, June 24, 2021, and approved the following resolutions. I will say that on our report, Item 1B has been requested by staff to be removed from the agenda as the proposed awardee withdrew its bid on yesterday afternoon. So we will have one resolution. Resolution authorizing award of a contract for the procurement of wheel-truing machines, maintenance, and repair services. I request approval of this resolution.
I'll second that. Jim Duratt.
Any discussion? Let us vote. Let us vote. The resolution has passed.
Madam Chair, the committee also received the following briefing, a briefing on confined, on the confined space program. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Abdul Salam. At the time, at this time, we'll hear from the Business Management Committee.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, June 24, 2021 and approved the following resolutions. Resolution authorizing the award of the procurement of leave management services, RFP P 47301. Item B. Resolution authorizing award of a contract for the procurement of Splunk Enterprise Security Subscription Maintenance Support, IFB B 48255. Item C. A resolution authorizing award of the procurement of property and casualty insurance brokerage services, RFP 48464. Item D. A resolution authorizing a three-year extension for the AirLink Mobility Manager Maintenance and Support, LOA L 44248. I request approval of these resolutions.
I'll second the motion. Jim Duratt.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Let us vote. The resolution has passed.
The committee received the following briefings. Briefing on technology updates and a briefing on diversity and inclusion. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pryson. We also request, have the resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals to establish a short-term borrowing program to facilitate efficient debt management in support of the capital improvement program. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Let us vote. The resolution has passed. Are there any other matters to come before the board on today? Are there any other matters to come before the board on today? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the board?
Good to be with you.
Thank you. Great. I have a comment. And I want to share the fact that we lost a previous board minister, a board member, Mr. Clay Long, and read the comment given by CEO Parker. MARTA offers its condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of longtime Atlanta attorney and conversation, and conver, conserv, he was a conversationist. Clay Long. Mr. Long was an early supporter of public transportation and served as chair of the MARTA Board of Directors from 1982 to 1984 during a time of tremendous transit development in the city. He has said it was during his time on the board that he first began to connect city, land use, and the preservation of water and air quality. As a public agency that takes seriously its environmental impact on the Atlanta region, MARTA is indebted to long for his work in this area and his lifelong dedication to conversation, conservation. And I want to say that on last week, I believe it was, that we went to the H.E. Holmes location, and I personally was made so aware of how important air quality is and what we do in transit to conserve it. So I wanted to make sure to recognize Mr. Long for his work. Thank you.
If I could say something, it was Clay Long in 1996 that convinced me to leave the private sector and go into public service in the nonprofit community. So he had a very big impact on my life.
Well, thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say it was really great to meet our new board members face-to-face, in person. Welcome aboard.
Yes. Just give them a hand. Our meeting is adjourned.
And Stacy, you need to get some lubrication on your button over there.
This meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great day.
Thank you, Madam Chair.